I'd like to call the March 7, 2024 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. I would like to read the Ethics Reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters that are voted on by the Commission in our meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the Consent Agenda. Do any commissioners have any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? I would like to propose that we add one additional item to the agenda for the meeting this evening, which is to have a discussion on the issue of the Swananoa Library. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as published with the addition of the Swananoa Library item, which would be taken up after the Consent Agenda and before public comment?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. So I know there's a lot of folks who are here who are interested in the future of library services in the Swananoa community this evening. Thank you all for being here. And so we wanted to have a moment to discuss this issue. Members of the Commission, and if you have, I know some folks have signs. If you do have signs, that's okay. But I would ask that you not, not like hold them up over your head, please. So we wanted to have a moment for the Commission to have an opportunity to discuss the issue.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to give direction that the County Commission supports the exploration of options to continue and improve library services in the Swananoa Valley, and that the Commission supports the continuation of library services at the existing location as options for the future are developed and implemented.
A second.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and second. Further discussion? All right. Well, I will just, I would just make one comment, which is that I support the motion. We appreciate all the interest in, in this issue. And, and, and part of, I think, the intention of this motion is to create some additional runway out there for discussions around what the future of library services in this part of the county, you know, can be, right? And there's, I'm sure lots of folks who, who we've heard from and talked to, who, who love the current library, are also aware of a lot of its limitations and challenges, right? And so I think what we're looking for is a good discussion around what can best serve this part of Buncombe County for the long term. So we appreciate everyone who's come out. We will vote on this motion. I know a lot of folks have also signed up and want to speak about the library, and you're absolutely welcome to still do that. So thank you for taking time to be here this evening. So further discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, it passes. All right. We now come to public comment. Let me just read our protocols on public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is for three minutes, and they'll be, you'll get an orange light when there's about 30 seconds left, and then a red light, and a, and a noise will go off when the three minutes is up. And we do ask that folks discontinue their public comment once the three minutes is up, because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. All right. And there's a list of folks that have signed up requesting to speak. We'll go, we'll go through the list. And then if there's anybody else who wants to speak during public comment, there'll be an opportunity to do that then. So everyone who wants to speak will, will get a chance to do so. But we'll get, we'll just go through the list first. And I apologize in advance for mispronouncing anyone's names. The first person is Marie Zaplin? Or, sorry, sorry, if I really whipped that one. But yeah, so feel free, come on up to the podium.
Hello, county commissioners. My name is Marie Kaplan, and I was the librarian at the, I was the branch manager and the children's services specialist at the Swananoa Library between 1985 and 2004. And, you know, the library has been in existence for 70-plus years. When I began working there, the branch was open 20 hours a week, and I had an assistant for 10 hours a week. There was no air conditioning, and the Swananoa Community Council, which owns the building, and paid for lawn mowing and building, cleaning maintenance. The materials budget for the branch was very low, which necessitated very careful choices. It was not until 1995 that the county commissioners decided that the Swananoa branch would be open for 40 hours a week, and that my coworker would be employed for 20 hours a week. It was after that that the county began mowing the lawn and taking care of the facility's cleaning. The county has never provided extra funds for the improvements and major expenses the building requires. And yet they dismissed the structure as the poorest county facility. The Swananoa Friends of the Library and the Swananoa Community Council have worked so hard and spent a great deal of their budgets to maintain and upgrade the building. They do not have the money to make the very extensive improvements, renovations, and repairs the county says it needs. The Swananoa area is one of the poorer sections of Buncombe County. The library is the only public building in the area, and it is a community hub. I would think that you would want to provide an educational institution for people who don't have computers and who can't go traveling around the country to other libraries for lack of time and money. At least, please, continue library services in Grovemont until another library can be built at a more central location in Swananoa. The present arrangement is a bargain for the county. The library system had provided the, the money to make the major, or, I'm sorry. The library system had promised the money to make the major improvements to the library building. And that, and the Swananoa Community Council has been in negotiations with the county for the past two years to, to improve, to give the library property free and clear. Thank you for your attention and for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. And I will also ask that folks not applaud or, or boo anyone who speaks. So whether you fervently agree or disagree with anyone who speaks, we just want everyone to have a chance to say what they're, what they want to share without kind of feedback, right? So thank you for, thank you for that. Okay, the next person that signed up is Jim Holland.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jim Holland. I'm a resident of Buncombe County, and I want to speak to you about the short-term rental zoning proposals that you charged the planning board with developing and that you're likely to act on this spring. The proposal is based on a premise that if the 5,000 or so short-term rentals in Buncombe were converted to long-term rentals, that much of the affordable housing crisis would be averted. The assumption being that these short-term rentals would become affordable housing. At best, that is naive, and at worst, it's deceptive. As you've heard from multiple realtors in Buncombe County, short-term rentals would not become affordable housing. As a short-term rental owner, charging a rent considered affordable wouldn't cover my expenses. And I didn't hear a single person at the planning board hearing session say that they could do that either. The reality is, is that the affordable housing crisis will remain, and the only group that will really benefit are the hotel owners in Buncombe County, who have a lot more money, a lot more land, and a lot more influence. An analysis that was done in New York City after they effectively ended short-term rentals showed that the occupancy rates for hotels skyrocketed, and that's exactly what will happen here. As you know from the TDA data, hotel occupancy rates have effectively remained flat since 2019. Trying to end short-term rentals through zoning will only mean that there will be more money for hotel owners and more hotels. If you conservatively assume that half of the 5,000 short-term rental properties are owned by Buncombe County residents, you'll be effectively ending an income stream for over 2,000 Buncombe County residents that will only benefit hotel owners and won't make a dent in affordable housing. One way to substantively address affordable housing is to work with municipalities and the Metropolitan Sewers District to develop and create the water and sewer infrastructure in the county that will support the density necessary for development of affordable housing, particularly along major transportation corridors. No developer can afford to build substantial affordable housing units without that kind of support. I hope that you'll not penalize at least 2,000 residents that use short-term rental income to live in the county. Short-term rentals and long-term rentals are very different, and most short-term rental owners made a conscious decision, not based on money, but based on the way they want to use their properties. I hope you'll not penalize the thousands of short-term rental owners by seeking to eliminate them to the benefit of hotel owners and the occupancy rates they so desperately want to increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Next is Lucy Bickers.
Hi. Couple of people have already heard some of this. I'm Lucy Bickers. I live in Grovemont, and I've been there for 20 years. I'm also semi-retired licensed clinical social worker, which means I've worked with kids from birth, because I was working with their moms, and to 18 years old. I worked for two years at the two alternative schools in New Hanover County and JEC, which, so I did some research on brain development and reading, which is kind of what we're talking about. What I found was early consistent reading leads to higher language skills, as early as nine months. So expectations of parents actually indicates an increase in the reading skills. Seven days a week is what they're recommending. And if a mom, sorry, guys, if a mom goes in and has somebody saying, "Okay, your assignment is to read for seven days," to your kid, they're more likely to do so. Trying to solve the problems later, rather than early, is not successful, and it costs more than early intervention, like alternative schools and JEC and treatment centers. One of the things about reading to the, to kids is they are better about making judgments and social, emotional intelligence. Excuse me. And good brain development is directly related to better mental health, cognition, education attainment in most children. They also need a safe space, as well as limited access to computers and other educational support systems. The library has a two-year-old reading class, which is pretty cool, actually. And one of the things they were saying is that easy access to books is essential. There are no buses on Old 70. The schedules of the buses that are there are, I won't say what I got here. And they can't walk to the bus stop, because there's this pond around which they would have to drive, walk. And I don't see any moms or dads or anybody putting a kid in a stroller and walking down there. It's too dangerous. If the weather's bad, these, if, if they're given a choice of staying home when the weather's bad and keeping their kids there, or loading them up in the car and driving over Black Mountain, it's going to reduce odds. A lot of them will, but a lot of them won't, simply because it's too much like work. And just going up to the library in Grovemont is, takes about two or three minutes for a lot of them. So I really hope that you would consider leaving it there, at least while you take, how long? I said 10 years the last time, to come up with another library location. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Matt Barker.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Matt Barker. I'm a Swananoa resident. I'm also a board member of Friends and Neighbors of Swananoa. The group of us who have been concerned about this decision and been communicating with various parties around it wanted to bring a positive message tonight. So we brought signs that say, "We're standing for open government and open libraries." Because we don't want to just stand against something. The decision obviously concerned us as residents of Swananoa. But we think the wider issue, too, is how the decision was made. And we think that ought to be a concern to everybody in Buncombe County, mainly because of the exclusion of essential stakeholders in this business. Back in the, in 2021, when this was last the topic of discussion with, with a lot of outcry from the public, a lot of comment was made about how important public input is to these decisions about the libraries in our communities, and that there's a qualitative aspect to the libraries in our smaller communities that has to be weighed in these decisions. So it was a real shock when this decision was made without any public deliberation and was just delivered to our community without any warning. So, but wanting to transition this with the motion that you've made. I appreciate that, recognize that for the, the good step that it is, but also recognize that for what it's not. It's not a commitment that you've made. Obviously, there's a lot of deliberation still to be done. And so I would just like to, to state a positive message in favor of Swananoa and say a decision to close this library is, is short-sighted. If you look at the comprehensive plan for 2043, Swananoa is identified as a key growth corridor, and it is slated for special attention that comes with a small area plan. There's a lot of growth that's going to be happening there. Swananoa is not tucked away in some corner of the county. We are sandwiched between East Asheville and Black Mountain, and we all know how dynamic both of those communities are. And as we've been telling our neighbors in Swananoa who are concerned about annexation or development running rampant in our community, it's going to come. It's inevitable. And we just want to have a voice. We want to be able to have some say in how that's done. And I think a library as, as an anchor of that small area plan makes a whole lot of sense. So we've got a lot of great things coming in Swananoa, the new development at the Beacon site that was announced by the Symmetry Group. Swananoa's going places. I just want to encourage the county to get on board. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Justice Rogers.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Justice Rogers. I'm the vice chair of our Library Advisory Board and a community member of Grovemont and Swananoa. I'm a fourth-generation Swananoa. My grandparents moved there from Alabama. They still own the property that my grandparents settled on. My grandparents donated the land to the church that my, my mother still attends in Swananoa. So Swananoa means a lot to me. And a library means a lot to me, too. As a child, that was where I went to go places that I couldn't physically go. And the library took me to those places. And as a retired federal law enforcement officer, I have the opportunity now to travel to those places in real time. And all of that is because of the library. As a kid, I mean, I skipped school to go to the library. Who does that? That was me. And this is a great life lesson for all of us who are part of this county, to truly learn from each other as community leaders and also as community builders. I strive to work to give opportunity to anyone, not just for my family, but just like people before me, families that came, for families that are to come. You know, Swananoa Grovemont is a small community where we take care of each other. We have events. It is, it is what a neighborhood should be like. You should be able to walk to the library and come out and have books to talk to your friends about and say, "Hey, look, they got these books at library. They got a series, a new series going on." And it's a great opportunity for us to continue to have the neighborhoods that we all wish for and grew up in. And so the Grovemont community is a, a hard-working community that raises money. We, we do events to maintain the park and the library with great intentions for the betterment of our community. It is your community as well. And since I'm part of the district, too, I would employ any of our district two commissioners to come to our, to any event that we have in Grovemont and to come to our library so that you can see that what Grove created, where it was a community not for black people, here I am, a black man, living in a community 100-plus years later, creating change in a community that another individual created change that limited my people from being there. Here we are now. So it's a great opportunity for you guys to come and see how our library is a home base for all the wonderful things that we do there in, in our community in Grovemont. It is an opportunity for you to come and do storytime with kids, read a book, spend some time with some of your neighbors, get to know the people who are here tonight, and realize how important the library truly is, not only to our community, but to our county and to those who are coming to our libraries. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, too. Thank you. All right, Sadie Simpson.
Hello. I'm Sadie Simpson, a resident of Swananoa. The recent actions regarding the closure of the Swananoa Library directly contradict the Buncombe County's stated values of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity. And these values are listed right there on our county's website. So just to break this down a little bit, respect, in the sense of maintaining library services in Swananoa, demands a halt to the closure process, recognizing the importance of preserving a library in our community. Integrity necessitates honoring the previous commitment made by the County Commission to protect the Swananoa Library from closure in 2021. Collaboration calls for a genuine engagement with community stakeholders to address facility challenges and to work together to find sustainable solutions, which sounds like that's the direction we're going in. So we're very happy about that. Thank you. Honesty requires transparency in the decision-making process, including a detailed explanation of how the closure decision was reached. Equity mandates a commitment to ensuring full and continuous library services for the underserved population and, and, not just in Grovemont, but within the greater community of Swananoa. And upholding these values is, is really essential to building trust, to fostering inclusivity, and ensuring the well-being of not just Swananoa residents, but all of Buncombe County residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katie Hadden.
Good evening. I'm Katie. I'm also a resident of Swananoa and Grovemont. I had a, a comment prepared for you guys, but with your motion to pause the closure and look for solutions, I'd like to amend what I planned to say. I think we're all pretty excited to hear that and surprised. You know, we've been working together to hopefully bring this to fruition, and we're so pleased that you've joined us in that tonight. And my request would be to echo some of what we've already heard, is that as we move forward, that we're included, and that there's opportunities for more community connections, whether that's like the meeting that Terry held already, or whether it's surveys, or whether it's just other opportunities for public input. As you said in 2021, I read the Mountain Express article before I came tonight. This is important to include us and to let it be an open procedure. And look at the energy that you have ready to help you with this. There's another conference room full of us down the hall. So I'm so pleased that we are at this intersection, this junction of aligning with each other rather than having to try to be heard. So thank you for hearing us, and I'm very excited for the steps to come. And I look forward to hearing from you what those next steps might be and how we can plug into that. The library in Swananoa, in Grovemont, does hold a lot of meaning, being where it is. We would like to look at ways to keep it there. And if that's not feasible financially or logistically and other reasons, then of course we're open to other options, be it on the bus route or at a more public place. But the park being there, the place where we have Groovin' on Grovemont, draws people naturally. So there is an incentive to keep the library there. A lot of the neighbors I've talked to in my advocacy so far have said they moved there purposely because of the proximity to the library. So I ask that you keep that in mind as you consider what needs to be done with that building and how we can best partner with you to get that done. But I just want to echo, like, you've got a, you've got a troupe here, ready to go to work. So please put us to work and help us help you keep this library. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission. Thanks for hosting us and thanks for listening. My name is Belle Geronda. I've lived in Swananoa for seven years and in Buncombe County for 12 years. I've never lived anywhere that had such a strong sense of community as Swananoa does. As Katie was saying, it's a place that runs on care and commitment and engagement of its citizens. It's one of the most affordable parts of the county and is now experiencing a lot of growth and development. And we think a lot of potential for positive, continuing positive change. Speaking today because of the recent announcement about closing the library, and I want to just talk a little bit about the importance of community libraries. I believe that library services are a crucial part of our path to the future in Swananoa. Libraries are magical places of learning, growth, and imagination. And they're also important engines of economic growth and opportunity. Through free, free access to resources, such as job search assistance, technology, training, early childhood learning, and entrepreneurial support, libraries empower individuals to succeed in today's competitive landscape. By fostering a skilled workforce, facilitating entrepreneurship, and providing spaces for collaboration and innovation, libraries play a pivotal role in driving economic development and prosperity. And of course, libraries provide a needed head start for the development of literacy in our children. As we invest in our libraries, we invest in the future of our communities. Please invest in the future of Swananoa. You won't regret it.
Great, thank you. Next is Alan Dai.
Thank you very much. My name is Alan Dai. I am the board chair of the Swananoa Community Council. I've lived in Swananoa for seven years and in the county for over 30. I came with some prepared remarks tonight to try to implore this commission to do what I believe that you knew was the right thing. And you beat me to it. You did the right thing, and I thank you for that. I just want to say that the best advice I've ever been given in my life was my father, who told me, "Always do the right thing." You've done that. Now it's our turn to do the right thing. And that is to work together with you to try to find real and sustainable solutions to what we recognize are difficult challenges with our local library. But I really am grateful that the county, that the commission has seen the value of what we have and has expressed an interest in trying to move forward and keep the things that really matter in our part of the county. Thank you very much for that. I look forward to working with you further.
All right. Thanks, Alan. Takira Rose.
Hi, friends. Good to see you all tonight. My name is Takira Rose. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. And I don't live in Swananoa, but I do work for the libraries. But I want to be clear, I'm speaking for myself tonight, not on behalf of anyone. My request to all of you is to please ask your staff to develop and communicate a clear vision for the future of library services in Buncombe County. From my perspective, we all understand that our community is facing a lot of different challenges, that resources are limited, and that leadership means making hard choices. But what is hard to understand, as many people have alluded to, are three different things. First was the lack of transparency about the county's decision-making process. Stakeholders weren't involved. It's hard to get information, even now after the fact, about what factors were considered in making this decision. Two is that communication when the county does make decisions is often sudden and surprising. So there was no real lead-up to the fact that this was being about to be announced. It lacks details about implementation. And it seems to lack empathy for the people who are impacted by these decisions and how it's rolled out. And, you know, that's not unique to this situation, but it's something that, that seems to continue to happen. It's also hard to understand whether there is any comprehensive vision for the future of library services in our county and how these decisions fit into a larger positive vision that we're striving towards. If anyone can help us understand why decisions are being made and provide some more information to back that up, it's easier to create buy-in from various people and, you know, not set the county up to be a villain that we have to push back against and to really just be the representative of, of the people who live here. As a county employee, I hear a lot of discussion about our core values, respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity. It feels like those were not followed in this case and not followed in several other cases involving the libraries that I won't go into here. So I sincerely hope that all of you are able to shift something about the way communication about our libraries is being handled. Thank you.
Thanks, Takira. Okay, Sean Wolf.
Hello, everyone, and thank you very much again for having us. And I did have a prepared statement, but thank you again for pushing forward with that. It was all about the importance of libraries, but I think that's been covered time and time again. The one thing that I do want to express still is the importance of those things that can't be measured that the library provides, especially the Swananoa Library. It's not just Grovemont, it's the entire community. They go above and beyond as far as actually working with the community. They know the, the patrons by name. Teenagers go in to ask for different advice that, uh, it, it's just, it's very, very eye-opening to see just how strong a community can be. And although I am a resident of East Asheville, I made Swananoa my home library because, again, you see these things that you just don't see in any other library. So again, thank you so much for reconsidering, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Michael Hosford.
Good evening. Like some of my predecessors here, I'll thank you for agreeing to take up the discussion about the library. Again, that's, as Alan said, the right thing to do, for sure. And also to echo what some others have said, I hope that your discussion will also include some discussion about what appeared from our point of view to be a lack of transparency about how the, how the decision was arrived at to close the library. It is alarming that an already underserved community could be deprived of a vital resource without public input. So I hope that we can resolve that in a way that, that makes it so that that won't happen again in, in other decisions. I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you again for taking up the discussion.
Thanks, Michael. John Carl Ziegler.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is John Carl Ziegler. I am a longtime resident of Grovemont. I've been living there since 1970, not continuously, but the house that my family has has been there continuously. My great-grandfather was one of the first six police officers ever hired by the city of Asheville. His badge number was three. His daughter, Edith, was one of the first full-time employees of the Buncombe County system. And she infused me with a love of reading and of libraries that served me well. When we moved to Grovemont, I was able to use that library. It fueled my interest in science and electronics, which led to me having many adventures all over the world, which eventually culminated in my being inducted into the Alumni Hall of Fame of the Computer Science Department at North Carolina State University's College of Engineering. And I've had an opportunity to see and learn a lot and make a contribution in this county. And my children have household been able to involve themselves in the library and provide. My daughter's Girl Scout Silver Star project was involved with that library and other things. It's an impressive, and it's a, it's an important part of the world. And the, I'm also a property owner in Grovemont. And my most recent tenant told me how happy they were that they were able to find an affordable house so close to a library for their three children. There are many people who will talk about the abstract values of public service and library. I will simply tell you that from an economic development point of view, a well-maintained library system and a well-curated library add value to my property. They add value to the county, and they attract the kind of people who can create jobs that will allow people to afford the housing that is there. I think the analysis that was done, that I've seen the bits and pieces of, of the value of the Swananoa Library was inept. And I would like to raise the bar and encourage you to do better. But this obviously demonstrates that the public that you're serving is involved, wants to be involved, and has the resources. I serve on the board of the Swananoa Community Council. I also serve on the board of the Swananoa Valley Medical Center, a 501(c)(3) that's managing an endowment well over a million dollars, doing public service and education service. And we've been in negotiations with the community council. There's resources here. There are people. There is money. There are interests you could take advantage of. Get to it.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Zoe Mull.
Hi, my name is Zoe Mull. My pronouns are they and them. And this is mostly a call for pause, so if it's redundant, I apologize. I want to speak about the recent announcement of the upcoming closure of the Swananoa Library by staff at Buncombe County. I want to make certain that the Board of Commissioners understands that the residents of Swananoa are angered by this announcement and by how it was revealed. This was a closed decision with no warning and without any way provided to present an alternative opinion. In fact, it's unclear who made this decision, as no mention of the Swananoa Library can be found in any published minutes from this board. We feel that the only way to proceed would be to put a pause on this decision and to revisit it in a properly public and transparent way. To those that worry that a pause could easily become a perpetuation of the status quo when change is clearly needed, I say that we envision a different scenario. In our vision, the county should publicly put a pause on closing the library and announce that they are calling for a blue ribbon panel of community leaders, library patrons, and county officials to explore concrete solutions to the very real challenges associated with the Swananoa Library. In the scenario, we could have a defined timeline and stated objectives that would give us a solid framework for solving these challenges together. I believe this would make everyone winners. The county would look like heroes. You could demonstrate in a real way that the needs of your constituents matter. And in the long run, we could find collaborative ways to continue library services in Swananoa without interruption. Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe. Nina Tovish.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nina Tovish. I do not live in Swananoa. I live in Shiloh, and my neighborhood library is Oakley. And when I heard about the closure for Swananoa Library, this gave me flashbacks to three years or so ago when we learned, to our surprise and shock and dismay, that there was a proposed plan to shut the Oakley Library, a process which happened under the aegis of some consultants. And the folks in our community felt like we hadn't had any opportunity to participate in that. And there was a big uproar about it, and I, I'm kind of having flashbacks from that process. It was a wake-up call to me to hear that the county had decided to close the Swananoa Library because my immediate first thought was, are they going to come for Oakley? And what guarantee do we have that that won't happen despite assurances to the contrary? So many people have mentioned it before, but I am delighted that you are reconsidering this. I commend you to an open public engagement process. And I hope that if nothing else, this convinces you that library culture is alive and well in Buncombe. People really care about these hubs of community engagement and the contributions that they make to the well-being, both economic, emotional, spiritual, and educational. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. Erin Hertz.
Thank you very much. Just before the last meeting, when the closure was announced, it surprised us so much that I was one of the only people to make it to our last meeting and discuss this. Obviously, a few friends and neighbors have grown concerned in that time. And I just want to thank you for hearing our voices. We have seen that decision change, and, and we hope that conversation continues. Last time I spoke about the many, many years of the Swananoa Library, about the importance and centrality in our community, I also spoke about the inflated costs that are being quoted by the county. And unfortunately, even just a few minutes ago in a county release are still being used as the basis. So I think those things need to be re-examined. And I'll say again that the Swananoa Library exists for and by the people of Swananoa. And it accomplishes that in spite of its faded paint and some other issues that we all can see from the outside. So again, to not say that it's perfect, but it reps, represents a community that has endured much and continues to thrive. So now more than ever, we need a place of learning for the people. If, if banning books is a bad idea, then how much worse is it to remove an entire library of books? So we're happy to partner with the county as a community, as our various councils that are represented here, to help figure out what it means to continue library services, not just in the immediate future, not to, just to kick that can down the road, but to really look at a vision for the future and run after it really hard. So you have many partners here. We look forward to continuing to work with you to provide service that's not just in our side of town, but that is truly local to Swananoa. So thank you.
All right, thank you for being here. Okay, Jenny Rowland.
Thank you for seeing us today. I'm going to wax a little personal and a little poetic because we are talking about books after all. So I'll start with a quote from one of my favorite authors, satire comedy writer Terry Pratchett. He wrote, "Books must be treated with respect. We feel that in our bones." Because words have power. Bring enough words together, and they can bend space and time. I'm here tonight to bend space and time, to both witness and use the power of these words. A year and a half ago, we had been planning to move to Asheville for years, saving money, looking for a house. Once we saw this Swananoa Library, we put an offer on the Grovemont House. And we said to ourselves, what a privilege. We live within walking distance of a library. And from Houston, you can't walk to anything. So, um, uh, personal, right? My husband and I have checked out books that are currently saving our marriage. He laughs more since he started reading again. And we, we have a place to go that's not at home. We both work from home full-time. I know we're not the only ones like that. There are neighborhood kids who go there. They need adult, stable support. They need books. They go to there to be seen, to be safe, and to learn from the incredibly kind and patient people that work there. Books were my refuge growing up in a household with a lot of strife. They saved me. They gave me complex worlds and systems. They taught me to learn, to think critically. I was a lit major, and somehow I have a really weird, big corporate job now. My daughter is six, and she struggles to read, but she's listening to an audiobook right now. Because of the peace, community, and bounty of this glorious place, she loves stories and is learning that someday, and maybe even now, her words will have power, too. Please keep it. It changes everything.
All right, thanks. And Jenny was the last person that signed up. But if anybody else would like to speak during public comment, you're welcome to do so. Are there any other members of the public? Yeah, come on up.
Hello. I came straight from work, which is why I didn't sign up. But I would like to say what most people here have said, which is that we are all so, so grateful to hear that the library will not be closed and also that we all have a lot of questions still about the process. That's pretty much it. I think that the process of closing a library should be transparent to the public and should involve the public in some way. And the people of Swananoa were completely blindsided by this. And while we're all really celebrating, I think the fact that we're not losing our library right now, I think we're all so pretty scared that it might happen in the future without any warning. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I didn't prepare, but my name is Courtney Constable. I've lived in Swananoa for 25 years. I've been an officer and board member of the Friends of the Swananoa Library for almost that long, about 20 years. And, you know, we would get together every month or every other month. We'd had fundraisers, book sales, and we would use our money and the Swananoa, Friends of the Swananoa Community Council. Both of us use money to help the library, to help the librarians, to do repairs that they weren't covered by this, by the county. And, you know, there's been a group of people for at least 25 years, probably, I'm sure, longer, that have really, you know, worked hard to supplement our library, which I, I don't know if the fact that we're unincorporated has anything to do with this. But, um, let's see, I'm, I'm, I've also been a special ed teacher for 20 years. I had a Girl Scout troop in that library for three years, which was great and made a lot of... And we also have supported library programs. It's just like a lot of people have mentioned, it's really important for our lower-income area to have a place to check out books, use computers. There's, I think there's still an AA meeting that happens there in that building. And then, you know, the only other thing, they, when it was announced that it was going to close, the cost of repairs was mentioned. And, you know, for somebody who's been on a board for years that were always looking at what can we repair, you know? And we have people constantly looking, you know, looking at everything to make sure it's up to snuff. It just was a little bit of a surprise. And also, some of the cost seems kind of high. You're like, maybe we don't need, maybe we can adjust some of the estimates, you know? Find, get, get a second opinion. I think that's all I have to say, but thank you for considering and, and thank you.
Thank you as well. Okay, anyone else? Yep, come on up. Yep. Come on up.
Hey, y'all. Thank you so much for hearing our voices again. My name's Galen Hutchinson. I live in Swananoa with my spouse. And the two of us naturally have four jobs in order to be proud homeowners in that area, in our age and demographic. We're also both teachers, so which is why we have four jobs in our two-person household. We are considering, very cautiously but actively, if we want to extend our family. And that was one of the major attractions to Grovemont and to buying a house near a library because of all the wonderful resources it might have, should we be able to afford adding one more. But I'm not really speaking actually on behalf of myself right now or our possible future children. My wife is an early head start preschool teacher at a state-funded program. And she often has to make or buy supplies for her own classroom. And the Swananoa Library is an exemplary resource, even if it's something as simple as children's books, so that she can support and supplement the education of other people's children right now. What this has done for our family has added a burden of a 30-minute round-trip drive, just so she can go out of her way should she have to go to the next nearest library for those resources. It's, I know that Swananoa often feels underserviced and underrepresented. And that is why this is an especially grievous wound for us who are actively engaged in and using that as a community focus. Thank you so much for your reconsideration.
Thank you. All right. Yep. Come on up.
Hello. I live near Swananoa. And just two observations about the area. One is if a library, a larger library, is built somewhere near the plant that burned down, you know, across the road, across the Woodson Bridge, you have to realize that people from, children from Grovemont will not be able to walk there because the road is dangerous. It has no sidewalk. And that's the one that's along the Swananoa River. So you have to consider that moving a library to another place does not include others unless it's, people are able to get to it in a safe way without having to be driven every time. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Barker. I've lived in Buncombe County 31 years this go-round. I met my husband here in 1986. So we were here when it was not a cool place to be. And we were young and single and found each other. But we've lived here, moved back here in '92. We've lived in Swananoa since 2005, so 19 years. Raised four kids here. I've been a Realtor in Buncombe County since 2002. I've watched the housing market go up and then crash. And then we rode the hard climb out of the housing crisis. And then came the pandemic. I've watched people with money pour into this county. I know because I've had a handful of them in my car, though I don't normally play in that sandbox. I mostly work with people who have jobs here and have to compete with people coming in from all these other places with cash. And they have to compete for that. So for the past four years, it has been so hard to get my buyers into houses. So it was shocking to me when I saw that the Swananoa Library was set to be closed because the average Joe people, the people who do the hard work and the heavy lifting in this county, need these services. These are important things. Services like the community library, like the Malvern Hills Pool, like the hospital that used to be the best. My first job out of college was there. But the library, that's something we can do something about. We have a granddaughter who goes to Owen Middle School. Our daughter's a single mom, lives in Beacon Village. And these are hard-working people. And I would just beg of you to consider them. Please consider them. I know Swananoa isn't much in the broad scheme of things. For in the past year, the average sale price, it was of all the zip codes in Buncombe County, Swananoa had the lowest average sales price. It's, we're normal, average people, but we have an incredible community. And I would just ask that you consider these people when you're making this decision.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, hey, I wanted to just say thank you to everyone who took time to come out this evening. We really appreciate it. So thank you, and to be continued. All right. Okay. The next item on the agenda, we don't have any presentations. There is a public hearing. And, yes, you do not have to stay. You're welcome to, but you do not have to. So feel free, feel free to go back if you want. Okay. We have a public hearing on the Recovery Housing Program Grant under Community Development Block Grants. And, yeah, so thank you. So, what do we got?
Hello. Thank you all for having me. Victoria Reichardt, Behavioral Health Manager. And here to talk about an opportunity that Land of Sky came to us about and to see if we were interested in pursuing some funding opportunity for recovery housing. So I want to share with you all just kind of some of the highlights around a CDBG grant. If you all recall, just recently closed out another grant different. A recovery housing program does allow for some more activities than the other. But this really comes through a state HUD grant that was awarded to the state and then is being managed by the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Rural Economic Development Division. And so this is to be treated like a CDBG grant. They had set aside $1.5 million for the Appalachian region. And what we're proposing and what Land of Sky, so I have Paul Moon here from Land of Sky. So if there's any questions from Land of Sky's perspective, they'll be able to speak. But they would be the grant administrator. So we're working in tandem together to really start talking with the community, getting input. But they would monitor, manage this grant ongoing. And so some of the requirements for eligibility, one, the maximum amount of the grant will be a million. And they would like, the state would like to see us be able to expend 30% of these funds within the first year. We would have 30 months to finish the project, whatever we've selected. And this is something where all municipalities, including entitlement communities and counties, are able to apply for. But this does not restrict where we are able to use these funds. So I know with that other CDBG grant, we weren't able to use it with the Nashville city. So that's not a restriction. And it is restricted to the Appalachian region, which, as you know, Buncombe County, that qualifies. And the important piece is that these units, that anything that our money, this money is used for must be rented to households with income below 80% or less of the AMI. It is a competitive application. There is no match required. And the application deadline is April 12, which is approaching fastly. So I appreciate you all for having us in for your meeting to be able to hold this public hearing. And so this slide just kind of identifies some of those highlights that the grant is looking for. Again, targeting folks that are low to moderate income. And just to acknowledge, a lot of our folks coming out of reentry have no income potentially at the beginning. So we really are wanting to help support some of our programs, getting folks into safe, healthy, family-like, substance-free living environments that support individuals in recovery from addiction. And kind of that centered on peer support and connection to services that promote long-term recovery. And we also want to make sure that whatever program, whatever opportunity that we are pursuing, that they fully allow medications for opioid use disorder. That has been something in the recovery community that continues those myths to be broken. And so really making sure that that is a value that a recovery program provides. As well as, we're pooling information from our Recovery Housing Report that was funded through the Opioid Settlement Funds. And again, part of that was really making sure that medications for opioid use disorder was allowed and also a recommendation around housing to become certified through the Nat, North Carolina Association of Recovery Residences. And so right now, recovery houses aren't monitored in any specific way. There's not a body of oversight. But this is an opportunity that we can set that expectation that we would want this house to be certified. So we have an outside entity that's able to monitor their processes, their policies, and help provide mentorship and technical mentorship. A lot of times, people getting into recovery housing, they want to give back, but they may not know all of the nuances. And so getting that support. And then we also want to make sure that we, our program would be culturally responsive and really helping support our marginalized communities, especially as our Recovery Housing Advisor had shared that sometimes, you know, there is not a diverse array of housing. And so being able to make sure people feel comfortable, there are people that look like them, that they can have that safe housing. So that is something that we'll continue to be looking for and making sure that any of those providers are able to be culturally responsive. So I also just want to note that this does align with our strategic plan towards eliminating deaths from overdose. And as well as one of our strategies with our opioid settlement strategic planning, that was a priority for our steering committee. And again, another opportunity to not dip into our opioid settlement funds at this point, but, you know, taking other opportunities that are available. And so some of these eligible activities to provide safe and stable temporary housing for those in recovery from substance use is about purchasing property, building on the property, renovating the property, anything that we can be able to expand the number of beds available in our community. And there is an expectation that any of these funds or any units that are provided through these funds maintain affordability for 20 years after the use. And so what we're operating from, back in January 12, the application became open. Obviously, there were some initial conversations. Would we be willing? Are we interested? And starting to tap into our Recovery Community Collaborative to get some input and thoughts. And then today, we're holding a public hearing to get input about what our community would like to see and also asking for you all to approve our citizen participation plan. April 2, we will expect to have a draft application ready. So we'd have more specifics about where, what, what would it look like? And would ask for you all to approve that draft application. And so that deadline for the application is due April 12. And we're expecting in May to get an award notification. And I'm expecting maybe in that June, July, finalize any contracts with Land of Sky, move on to contracting with any of the, you know, the property, all of those types of contracts that need to be in place. And then really start beginning the project implementation. There is a requirement to provide you all with quarterly updates. And then by December 26, hope for finalizing the project. Obviously, we know construction doesn't always work in our favor, but that's, the goal is within 30 months. And then with this citizen participation plan, it does require your board, or our board approval. And this really was drawn from our previous citizen participation plan for that previous CDBG grant and just updated to reflect the Recovery Housing Program. And so again, as I mentioned, we're currently working even with the Recovery Community Collaborative, which is a network of folks that are in the recovery community space, providing recovery housing and the treatment. And that was really an intent to bring those two parties together to help inform one another, to be that resource, to educate our recovery housing about services and supports available and best practices, and also those that are referring to recovery housing. So they've been giving us some ideas and leads and people to talk to and continuing to use them as a venue to help give us feedback. And so barring any questions that you all have in the public comment, what we're asking is for you to approve, vote and approve the citizen participation plan and to hold the public hearing. And that is all that I have today. Any questions?
Thank you, Victoria. And I just wanted to say thanks to Paul and Land of Sky for being such wonderful partners. And I was curious, Paul, was there anything that you would like to add? Victoria's covered it. Good job. I'll be the face. I'll be the writer.
Can I just ask one question? I'm trying to visualize what this looks like. It sounds like a great idea, certainly something that meets our long-term and short-term goals here. What, is there any kind of balancing of what initiatives might be favored? Like, for example, obviously, we don't want someone just saying, "I want a million dollars so I can build something brand-new tomorrow." But among the eligible activities, is there any kind of rubric or metric for deciding?
I think our biggest thing right now is timeline. And so I think the ideal situation would be potentially someone who's already in that recovery housing space and has property that they are interested in expanding. That would be my ideal. So we have someone that has shown commitment to the community, that has shown the ability to operate, and again, has hopefully owned property that then we can build on. I'm sure you all can imagine that even with administrative fees, so if we're thinking about a million, maybe administration, oversight, monitoring, we're looking at $900,000. So to have to purchase property and build, that will just limit what we have available. So my hope is if there was property, maybe we're able to build two units, you know, that holds six people each. That would be the ideal situation. But not limited to. But the timeline, I think, is going to be the biggest push because April 2, we would need to be coming forward with you all with a plan of where and who and all of that. So the more that things are put together, the better we can meet these deadlines.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt the resolution to approve the RHP citizen participation plan.
Oh, one second. You need a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. You were that.
I was also unclear if, like, that needs to go first, and then we do that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you first. Getting the sequence right. Okay. Well, let's open the public hearing at 6:11 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the hearing on this matter? I will close the public hearing at 6:12 PM.
Now I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the RHP citizen participation plan.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate this.
Thank you.
Ms. Pinder, any items under County Managers? All right. No matters, no items under old business. Under new business, we have the appointment of an interim clerk to the Board of Commissioners. So first, I'd just like to say that, before we get to the agenda item itself, that tonight is our, is the last meeting that we have. With us, the person who has served as clerk to the board for the past five years, Lamar Joyner. And so I just want to say on behalf of the board, Lamar, how much we appreciate your service to the board. And I'd like to ask you to come up to the podium for just a moment. So just on behalf of the board, we just want to say congratulations to you on the new opportunities. new opportunities for you and your family, but also just how much we appreciate your service to Buncombe County. You know, Lamar came here five years ago and has just been this steady, like, steady voice in support to the Board and to the whole county government operations here. So, we want to present you with a small token of our appreciation, and I'll just read it. Presented to Lamar Joyner, an appreciation of five years of dedicated service as clerk to the Board of the Buncombe County Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our organization and our community, Buncombe County Government. Lamar, thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Well, after all of that, don't know what to say, but first off, I say thank you, and I'm appreciative. But y'all don't listen, because I said I did want this, so. But furthermore, I'm very appreciative of all the relationships and the opportunity to serve the community as well as the Board. I'm not going to stay up here long, so all I'll say is thank you, past and present, anybody that I've worked with at Buncombe County, past Commissioners, past staff, present staff. And y'all are in good hands, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Ed. Here you go. Okay. So, we are going, Buncombe County is going to be going through a process for consideration of appointment for a new clerk to the Board. And so, at our meeting this evening, we need to make a decision on an appointment of an interim clerk to the Board.
Then, I move to approve the resolution, appointing an interim clerk to the Board for Buncombe County, and that interim clerk is Stacy Woody.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And Stacy, we're so glad and appreciative of your ability to help us in this role, and for all of your great service to Buncombe County as well. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you. Okay, Commissioners, the next item is consideration of a single prime contract for the AB Tech Inca Campus vacant building demolition.
Good evening, Commissioners. We've given a brief update about this project today, and then, if you're so moved at the end of this presentation, we'll have an action request to approve a contract to keep this project rolling forward. So, as we get into building demolition, what does that include? What all is needed to do that? One of the first things that comes up is hazardous materials abatement. So, we want to make sure that anything that's in that building that's harmful to the folks tearing it down, to the community, or needs to go to a special place, is noted and dealt with properly. We want to make sure that utilities are disconnected properly so that it is a suitable site for the future, and we're not causing any other harm to those systems down the line. And then, obviously, building demolition, it's a big step in a building demolition. So, we want to make sure that we get that thing torn down properly. And part of that is recycling to maximize landfill divergence. So, we don't want to just be sending materials to the CND cells at the landfill unnecessarily if they have other homes they can go to, to be recycled, reused. And then, regrading of the property once all of those things are done to a suitable site. So, as those are, some of those are pretty complicated things to do. So, we reached out with an RFQ, seeking consultants to assist with getting these documents together, make sure we do all these things properly. The Civil Design Concepts from right here in Asheville was our consultant on that. They used a subconsultant in TERRICON engineers and scientists to handle the hazardous materials abatement. They sampled over 400 different materials, or samples of materials inside that facility, and put together that survey. Three of the big ones that pop up are obviously asbestos-containing materials, lead-based paints, and that big P word that we shortened to PCBs. So, we had to make sure we deal with those things the proper ways through this entire project. Some examples of asbestos-containing materials, just for informational purposes. On the left there, you see floor tiles. Those are nine-by-nine in size, which is always a really good indicator that they will contain asbestos, as well as the black glue underneath those. It's typically a good indicator of asbestos in these older facilities. And the photo on the right is insulation on piping throughout the facility that also contains asbestos. And then, PCBs, what are those? Well, they're commonly found in these buildings in magnetic ballasts, especially in the older facilities, which is that photo on the left. And that's what operates the older fluorescent light fixtures in facilities. Photo on the right is an electrical transformer that is used to power the building. The oil inside that oftentimes can contain PCBs. That one's actually got a funny note. You see the yellow sticker on it says, "Does not contain PCBs." When you peel that sticker back, the sticker under it says, "Contains PCBs." So, we sent that off to be tested, to make sure what we were dealing with, and in fact, it is PCBs. So, those have to be sent off to the proper facility for recycling and disposal. And then, of course, demolitions. I use this picture to show the size of that building. It is a large facility, and that also points to the importance of the recycling measures that will be taken. So, asphalt, concrete, metals of any kind, all of those items will be separated out, sent to those proper places, to really minimize what goes to the landfill. And of course, I probably hit this too. There we go. So, regrading of the property, what does that mean? So, the image on the left there, you can kind of see the outline of the facility, the kind of L shape in there, and how the, it breaks up the slopes, which are all of those other little squiggly lines. And then, around that, you see silt fencing that's laid out to protect stormwater runoff from any sediment going downstream or downhill to other properties, as well as a tree protection fence that'll help protect some of the natural elements that are already there. And then, on the right side, you see when the building is gone, you see the grade lines that establish a new slope. Each one of those is just one foot in elevation change. You can tell it's a pretty flat spot when it's all done. And the project manual calls out for no slopes greater than two to one, so it keeps it relatively flat and really helps with stormwater runoff. So, that action item, so when we got all these contract documents, or construction documents together, we put the item out for bid. We received three bids, of which DH Griffin was the lowest apparent bidder. So, our action item tonight would be to approve the contract with them, so that we can get started. If so moved and approved tonight, demolition, not construction, we get confused on that. But we'll begin the end of this month, early April, and should wrap up by September. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer.
Thank you. I'll move that we execute the contract with DH Griffin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we have some board appointments to talk through. The first is on the Ag Advisory Board.
Motion to appoint Kyle Guy to the Ag Advisory Board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've also got an appointment position open on early childhood education. There's been some discussion about potentially keeping that open just a little bit longer to see if there's any other applicants who wish to apply, but we do need to, we do need to fill this soon. So, is it agreeable that we keep it open for some additional period of time, but that, like, in two meetings from now, we definitely make an appointment regardless? So, is that agreeable to everyone? So, if you know anyone who'd be interested, it's a great committee and very important in terms of making recommendations on early childhood education investments. So, all right. So, we'll keep it open a little bit longer, but we need, we'll do that at our meeting two meetings from now. Okay, the last one is on the Buncombe County Planning Board. And Nancy Waldrop has served two terms. And, but we are in the midst of, like, some very important implementation measures around the comprehensive plan. So, there had, I know there's been some discussion about asking Nancy to continue to serve. So, I'll just kind of open this up for discussion, so.
Just a procedural question. Is it possible for someone to continue to serve in lieu of having another person to replace at the moment, if her term's expiring and we traditionally haven't extended? That's kind of a Stacy or Lamar question. You're not off the hook yet.
It's the Board of Commissioners rule that people serve two terms. So, that being said, you can also waive that rule and appoint her for another full term.
Who would occupy that seat if we didn't formally appoint? And just allow someone to finish out until they're replaced?
She would continue to occupy the seat until we pick a replacement.
I think that makes sense. She's started the process. We're in a really critical time in that Board, but I'm open to other Board members' thoughts.
And did we mention, maybe I missed it, I think, what's important? She is Chair of the Board. And right now, would, I agree, Brownie, not be a good time to turn over from what we're going through.
And just to be clear, she has applied for another full term, if we so chose to.
Yes. Yes.
She's willing to do it.
Yeah, she's willing to do it.
Cannot require her to do this.
Good point. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're not forced.
Okay. Any other thoughts and comments on this?
I'm supportive with her being Chair, and in light of what we're going through with the comp plan, with the text amendments, I think it would be good to keep her in this position at this time.
Do you prefer that to be in the form of, because we do have two options. We could simply say, Nancy, we're not going to appoint anyone yet, and you're going to serve, so a bit longer, and then we'll, we will come back around to this once you've gotten through some of these very substantive ordinances that you're looking at, that may be six months, 12 months. Or we could just appoint her to another term. Which would be your preference, when you say, let her keep serving?
I think for clarity with this, I support the additional term with this. So, I'll make a motion to reappoint Nancy Waldrop.
Second. All right. We have a motion, second, to appoint Nancy Waldrop to another full term on the Planning Board. And I'll just make, my comment would be, I support, I support the recommendation. But I would, I would also just say that, like, we do have a general policy of limiting community members to two consecutive terms. We've had folks do two terms, and then someone else comes in and does it for a while, and then they might come back and reapply a few years later. But I do, I do, I do think it's generally a very good policy, because it's just, it's just good to get new eyes on issues, right? And get a kind of fresh perspectives. So, I support this, but as really kind of like, I think it's a really exceptional circumstance with just, having just adopted the comp plan and the Planning Board having gone through that, and like, the issues to implement some of this.
I agree.
I don't think we should, I don't think we should normalize it, I guess is my comment. Yeah. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, Nancy, thank you, if you're out there listening. Stacy, any other board and commission items tonight? Okay. Fantastic. Okay, then we come to, are there any updates from any County Commissioner, Board, Board and Commission updates? I don't think we have any either. All right, great. We have a couple of announcements. On March 19th, at 3:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 19th, at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a need for a closed session?
Pursuant to one, General Statute 143, 31811A3, request to discuss a legal matter with the Board. And secondly, pursuant to General Statute 143, 31811A5, want to discuss a proposed property acquisition matter. We're just looking for direction from the Board and should not have to come back in here.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session for those stated purposes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And as Mr. Free said, once we complete the closed session, we will simply adjourn the meeting and we'll take no further action.